Actually, yes, for all.
Okay, um, need a motion to approve the minutes for the February twelfth, twenty twenty four regular meeting.
So move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Prove claims filed with the county auditor for the amount of three hundred thirty-five dollars and twenty-five cents.
So move.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proven play claims filed by the county auditor for sixty-seven dollars.
So move.
Your second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fund transfers, can you explain those to me, Chris?
Sure. So this is all, um, then budgeted where we move funds from the general fund to the supplemental. Originally, we had, um, was budgeted five hundred thousand, but during the budget process, you cut that back to two hundred and fifty thousand for this year and for next year. So that's moving from the general to the general sub. Um, budgeted twenty thousand in the general fund to move to capital projects. And collections from the jail room and board, we had budgeted to move thirty-five thousand back into the general fund. And then rural services to secondary roads, uh, this round, we're transferring one point two seven to five hundred. And that is half of what was budgeted last year.
Okay.
So before the end of this fiscal year, I will move the rest of it over into Brian's budget into the secondary roads fund.
Okay, and that's from local option sales tax?
Yes.
Motion to approve that from transfer.
I second.
Um, roll call though.
Percy, aye?
Yes.
Probably yes. You have approved a minor plat for Horn Trigger.
Who listens on the crane avenue is where this, uh, property is, thirteen hundred block. Very close to where the large mountain cattle, but has no roof over it, you know, six hundred to eight hundred head. But, uh, earlier in the, uh, fall, we had a few calls, made a few site visits. Uh, there was a commodity shed that was being proposed in this area and the farmer was looking to sell it. And, uh, the individuals that are buying it, basically they're in cooperation and partnerships with several of the Amish in and around the area where they're building these barns, which this is an example of one. Two hundred head of cattle, they're in there, then they raise them to about three hundred pounds and then they move them to another location. But this green square is what we're talking about that became the minor plat. This building here, I went out and, uh, if you define it as a principal use, needs to be twenty-five feet off the, uh, rear, twenty-five feet off the side, uh, within Iowa's Farming Exemption Code, we try to, we cannot force them, um, to be to our county setbacks, but we tried to get them to cooperate voluntarily. Now, we would agree to twenty-five feet as you see the survey, um, that will come up. They ended up setting the foundation twenty-four feet with Iowa exemption code, they didn't go right up to their property line. So we tried to work with them, you can see twenty-four feet and twenty-four feet. Um, the egg exemption, um, with this being an ag use, if you've been out there, there's like basically a TMR mixer and a John to your tractor. And then they store open front with all their commodities and mix those together. And then they go around to the local Amish farms that have those two hundred head buildings and feed their calves. Um, as far as the legal description, them working with us, they got a driveway permit from the county. Uh, we had no issues with it. Um, again, didn't need to be rezoned because it's a principal ag use. They're not selling, you know, having customers coming and out, they're just basically having trucks to deliver feed and then they mix that. So in regards to, uh,
Janet, driveway is adequate there that they can maneuver those big feed trucks through it.
Yeah, so they actually, uh, um, most part, they use all tractor loader and tractor and a TMR mixer from what I've, uh, experienced out there. So everything, uh, looks proper. And again, they worked with Brian and Phil and the size where it needed to be. In regards to, uh, Maureen was good with the, uh, paperwork, um, none of the department heads had an issue. Again, I think I've noted that the, uh, egg exemption permit was filled out on, ended up being November first. That's in compliance with our office and all of other offices signed off as well. There's any other questions?
Any questions, Sean?
I do that.
Right. As for motion to approve?
Mm-hmm.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the minor plat for Bronco. Oh, wow, Amber, you're quick. How are you?
I just have to click.
He's on it.
Uh, this is what property, uh, located on three hundred and tenth, just to the north of Brunnings, uh, Rockory, down in the Brandon area, give you a little bit of an idea. But, uh, this property was recently rezoned from to A two in October of twenty twenty-three. So this is just the final process to develop an actual primary plat on record. The CSR content, share that, Amber, for the rezoning, it was straightforward, CSR thirty-nine, six and fifty-four. Here's where that location, you'll see on the next slide where the burning rock quarry is, you'll see a little bit of a snip of it, uh, with the aerial imagery on the survey. But in regards to the survey, meets all of our expectations. Um, we have to have at least two hundred feet wide, as you can see, it's three hundred and thirty. There's already a driveway that they'll use and expand if they need in the future for any type of residence. But basically, this is a split and a rezone to, uh, give some property to his son, who's going to eventually build a house. So pretty straightforward, all the department heads, uh, signed off, uh, there was no questions. The only unique thing was, uh, the split being exactly ten acres. Um, Maureen, uh, did question the, uh, legal description and worked through that with Crawford's. Because sometimes when you split ten or a twenty or a forty, you could really simplify per Iowa code, what the legal description is, it doesn't have to always meet a, have a meets and bounds type of, uh, legal. And Maureen and Crawford's worked through that to get it to, to suffice her requirements.
Make a motion to approve the plat for Bronco.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Items for discussion, place on the file for the following manure management plans. V and L Hogs, Winthrop Fremont Township, section sixteen, Bacon Barn LLC Independence, Perry Township, section twenty-five.
Motion to place someone on the file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Door lock attorney's office, who's got the lead on this one?
Well, that was discussed in the security meeting last week.
Right.
And there was a quote in here for it.
Yes.
Have the work done, twenty-two thirty.
And this brings him up to code as far as?
Well, secure his office area. That building was compromised and the lot cannot be programmed with any more access codes.
Right. Is this going to be a card reader then?
Yeah, my understanding, yeah, just like our fobs.
Okay.
And it'll be, it'll be set up so like, um, just like any of the other entrances, only the people that need access will have access to it.
It'll be all in place and will just be designated. Designated anyways.
I think this is a necessary thing that's got to be done, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Roger.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
All right.
All right. Lisa, you're up.
Yeah, Amber?
Yeah, do you have any questions in that public hearing? Setting the date on Finn Hall.
Just setting the date.
Straightforward, yeah, okay.
Morning, I just want to kind of give you guys an overview. Uh, I provided you guys with some information here and I'll just go through it a bit. A lot of the information on that first page refers back to this middle section of my annual report. Um, I probably won't get through absolutely everything, but you guys are very capable of looking things up and seeing if you have any additional questions. Um, but first, uh, I want to talk about economic development, some things that we've done over the last, worked on over the last year, some things that we have coming up in this, uh, next year. And, um, one of the things, I'll hit on this real quick first, we have that we have our schedule set for our lunch and learns, we've renamed them Building Better Business in Buchanan, which is a long title, but it kind of talks about what we're trying to do with these. Um, we have an upcoming workshop, February twenty-seventh, and then just to really, uh, draw your attention, we do have one coming up, March sixth, from five thirty to thirty, that's our grant writing, basically kind of two point O. Um, and that's with Buchanan County Community Foundation. Um, so that cycle opens March first and then closes April fifteenth. And what we're trying to do is provide people within the county or nonprofits or cities or, uh, entities throughout the county, uh, an opportunity to have one-on-one work with Buchanan County Community Foundation. So there will be several people there from that, um, that we should be sending out information on that today or tomorrow. Um, for people to sign up, it is free to anyone who wants to come. And it takes, you know, if you have an idea of what you want to do for your community, um, a playground, you want to update your playground. Um, and maybe you've looked at the, the website for Buchanan Community Foundation, maybe you've got to start. You don't know where to go, um, you need, you need suggestions on how to do it. That's kind of what this is about. They will do hands-on, they will also help, you know, if you're writing the grant, they'll help you with that. At this meeting, um, they'll also, uh, just provide you ideas of maybe what you could do, so. And then on the back, it just tag, uh, our leadership program that's coming up in the fall. And then to touch on that as well, we are currently working on an additional leadership program, uh, for the county. And the focus of that is a community leadership program. We want to be able to really, um, try to reach out to people who are in communities within the county and really inform them on what, uh, what it is to be on the city council, what it is to be on lower supervisors, working with the community club, working throughout your, your, um, community, ways that you can become involved and provide you with some leadership skills along the way as well. But really trying to encourage that, um, that activity and that, uh, engagement with our, our community as an accounting.
I think that's really important because we're in a world that's hard to get people to want to step forward and do things like that or even volunteer for organizations or anything, so.
Yeah. So that one, um, we're hoping to launch that in January of twenty-five. We're in the planning process right now, so, um, we're looking forward to seeing something like that really hopefully take off within the county. So we will have two opportunities for leadership programs once we get to start that.
I like this one, you're building better business on AI.
Yeah, yeah, that was, we're kind of excited about that one, that AI is a real, uh, as everybody knows, it's big right now and learning how to use it is, it was kind of fundamental for business and what is. Um, so economic development over the last year directly wrote grants for communities and others, um, that brought in two hundred and nineteen thousand justing grant funds through the state and other, uh, other sources. From this, these grants, it spurred over five hundred and eighteen thousand in private investment in infrastructure improvements. Um, so this information, uh, that I have for, that I'm giving with these numbers, comes from the actual business plans that were provided to us by these businesses, uh, and that are doing this. So then along with that, we provided three twenty-five thousand dollar business growth loans, um, from our revolving loan fund, those went to Getney Bakery, Premier Animal Wellness and Nick's Family Grocery. Our business growth loan, our revolving loan fund, we do not compete at all with banks. We actually had a banker reach out to us for one of the projects that they wanted to see if we would, uh, be, this would fit within our, uh, guise of what we're doing. Um, it is a, as I said, a twenty-five thousand dollar loan, it's over five years, it's at three percent interest. There is no interest charged for the first six months, there's no payment until nine months in. That gives those starting businesses that opportunity to kind of get on their feet and be able to move forward, uh, with what they're trying to do without having to worry about any type of payment towards a loan. So, um, and then along with RLF, we also did two key business grants. Key business grant is a ten thousand dollar grant, it's available to anybody within the county. Um, it, it has, that qualifies. Uh, the two business grants that we, key business grants that we did this year was Nick's Family Grocery and the Getney Bakery. Obviously, Nick's Family Grocery is a key business within the threat, we want to do everything we can to assist them. They used our grant to help with the point of sale system, new point of sale system that they did, um, as well as they, they did extensive, uh, remodeling within the business. Um, for the Getney Bakery, they use that for some specialty ovens that they needed for bakery. And at that time, uh, that Getney Bakery made that application, there were no, uh, bakeries within brick and mortar bakeries, I should say, within Buchanan County. Um, so this was an opportunity to get something that has been taught, that you hear a lot about people wanting bakeries, um, uh, that we're able to assist with. Since that time, we have seen, um, another bakery, um, within the county, which is great. Um, we've also, I think before that time, there was one up in Old Line that was developed.
The one that I think you're talking about is more specialized, though.
Yeah, they're gluten-free.
Yeah, gluten-free, yeah.
Mm-hmm. But yeah, they, that's a great option to be able to have that gluten-free. Um, so when we take the RLF and the key business grants, uh, that we saw these businesses add an equivalent of seventeen new full-time positions, um, it spurred an additional seven hundred and seventy thousand, uh, infant, infrastructure and private investment and business investment. And that is in addition to the, the amount, uh, above. So I do want to talk a little bit about Paws, it's a new, or it just opened. It is a new, um, veterinary clinic, uh, that received our key business, or not a key, but our business growth loan. Um, and also we sold, we have received, we had received three, um, properties from Independence Economic Development when they decided they were no longer going to be functioning. They donated that to Buchanan County Economic Development. Since then, we have sold it to those properties, two went to, uh, for housing. And then the last one went to Paws for their new veterinary clinic, which is something that we felt would be very beneficial to the county, bringing people in for that. So when we talk about the key business grant, that is what is funding our key business grant. So those donations are that, those sales from those lots, um, provided the, provide the funds for the key business grant that we do. So nothing comes out of our budget, nothing comes out of our revolving loan fund, um, our yearly budget. So just want to, um, explain how that works.
Lisa, do you not have any more property now? It's all gone?
No, it's all been sold. Um, and the last one is in the process, so.
Because I was curious about the one between the interstate and that circle drive.
No, that is owned by, um, one of the gentlemen who has the store achievements.
Okay.
So, no, I wish we don't.
I'd just like to see something go up on there.
I would too, yeah. Um, you would likely see a storage unit go up there.
Just believe.
Yep, exactly.
Or Mexican restaurant.
Maybe Chinese. Um, so, uh, in addition, we continue to work with tourism over the last year and will continue to work with them as they go forward. Um, just to point out, uh, tourism is economic development. Um, some of the figures from the state, uh, seventeen million dollars was spent in Buchanan County in twenty twenty-two in visitor spending. Um, that's nothing to sneeze at, so.
Is there, you get that, those figures from the Rivalist, do you?
Um, actually, I think, yeah, they might be the Rivalist or another. I, I'd have to look exactly where it's from, I have, I have it on from the state, they do it for all of the counties within the state.
I just remember the technology behind all that and they can, they know where you're, because of your cell phone, they know.
They know where you're stopping and. Where you're coming from, how long you've been there, how long you're here, where you're going to spend your money. It's, it's a very, very good program for knowing how money is spent throughout the county. Um, our organization was also very, uh, had an instrumental role with Independence Premium Foods. Um, when we found out that, we found out that, uh, Blue Buffalo was closing, the very first call we made was to Iowa Economic Development Authority, um, and really the stars aligned. Uh, we were able to connect with the prospective business at the time, United Premium Foods. Um, so working with the city, working with the state, uh, the result turned out to be Independence Premium. Uh, we were, uh, so we did lose, unfortunately, those jobs from Blue Buffalo, but we will, over the next three years, uh, have two hundred and twenty-nine new high-paying, high-quality jobs within Independence Premium. I only see them growing even more, so that's exciting that instead of having that vacant property, we have, uh, a business that is very vital and vibrant. Um, as of now, they're still getting ready to open, I think they have about fifty employees to get started, there's a lot of, uh, it's not a case where I worked at Blue Buffalo, so I know what to do at this, there's a lot of retraining that needs to be done, um, for what they do, they actually do, Blue Buffalo did a dry product, dry, you know, the treats. This place does a wet dog food, um, and then they also, um, are USDA certified, so they will be doing some human food as well. So kind of exciting to see. Um, we continue to connect with our businesses and industries, um, as well as meeting with all of our partners. Uh, and we're just about done with the last housing study. Uh, several of the communities have adopted them, I know Jessup last night adopted theirs. Um, some are adopting them next month because they received the information a little later and, uh, but they will be adopting them in the next month, so we'll see that. And then one, one other thing I did want to point out that we provide through our rural, we receive a rural IDs, IDAS network grant, and on the front of our Facebook, we have a button, a business, Buchanan County Business Lab. That is something that's available to anybody, it's free of charge for them to use, and it has really great resources and they're one-on-one resources. They are virtual, but it's one-on-one talking with someone. So some of those include, um, assistance in the areas of startup coaching, business management coaching, succession planning coaching, website evaluation and design, peer learning roundtables and forums. And they have, also have a library of workshops and podcasts, it's really relevant topics for businesses and industries. So that's something I'm trying to kind of get out there a little bit more that, you know, we, we work closely with S B D C. Um, and, but that's another opportunity, if you're not able to connect with S B D C, uh, you can get a lot of great information just by clicking on our.
Casey, you want to explain quickly why it's important to have this housing study done?
This housing study is very important for any type of grant applications. I've used them, um, I've used this extensively in number of different grant applications. It also provides our communities an idea of where their housing stock is at. Um, shows, makes them really focus on maybe property that is available. Um, and I know for Independence, they're doing an additional housing study. So our study will be able to be the basis for them to continue and really drill down into it. But all of the communities, um, the county, uh, knowing where the housing is, is important. Knows, knowing what it's like and knowing what we need to be doing to add to our housing stock over the next few years.
And this helps developers too to understand.
Oh, yeah.
Get out there.
Yep, it's something that we really, uh, try to get out to our developers, uh, try to reach out, um, to bring in more housing to the area. And the last one that was done, that spurred the apartment buildings in Independence, had it not been done, uh, I'm not sure if we would have reached that most forty-eight units. There's probably a few other things that I maybe didn't, didn't go through, but, uh, our career fairs, uh, our lunch and learns, our leadership, um, our social media, we do have, um, we're lucky enough to have Hillary Weber as our social media, uh, marketing and communications person, just doing a great job of getting the information out about our organization, about those people, our communities, our county, our investors, um, trying to make us really visible on social.
Okay. Um, can we approve the housing study today?
It's not on the agenda to approve?
No.
And actually, as far as Lisa's report, it doesn't need approval for anything.
So.
Lisa, do you have any chance to know how we're doing on securing a grant for the childcare facility?
So the childcare facility, if you're specifically mentioning Independence, okay. So right now, Independence is going through a childcare study. There is no, there isn't anything like there had been previously as far as infrastructure grants available, that was a ERPA grant, they had done it once, they talked about doing it a second time and did not follow through with that. Instead, they did it as a slots grant, but, um, there isn't really, there are other avenues we may be able to pursue through community development block grant. Um, that would help with that, but right now, the best thing that they are doing for Independence is they are doing a study to, and they're working with the task force to plan their next moves and how they're going to do it.
I think, like, Old Line, Fairbank and Jessup all got grants for that.
Fairbank and Jessup did, and I'm not sure about Old Line. Fair, Fair, Fairbank was able to add, uh, thirty-two slots, they were already, they're really in a good position where they were already doing fundraising, getting ready to add on, um, and hoping, and this just provided them that extra amount of money that they needed to add those thirty-two slots. So, yeah, that was a great opportunity. Um, I know Jessup has been working diligently on childcare, um, for the community, to see what they can find, uh, for opportunities in childcare within. To see what they can find, uh, for opportunities in childcare within, within the community. That one, uh, though, at that point, they weren't ready to move forward, uh, so therefore, they did not on that particular grant.
So, our, uh, I guess it was an interview over the weekend where V G M, uh, added a childcare facility in their offices, which would be terrific if we could have employers do that, but it's tough.
Yeah, there was a grant and these grants, when they did it, it was an employee, employer grant where they could put facilities on, on their, uh, property and we met with our industries. But the grant was basically open for two months and if.
Fast.
Yeah, if you don't already have something in the pipeline, it's almost impossible to, to move forward with that.
You have to have a big enough place to expand to.
And our employers are telling us, you know, if they got a two and three shift operation, it's really hard for them to get childcare for the employees and stuff to, and, cause they're not in those weird hours and stuff. And I just thought I would say that, uh, we got a, a board that's well-engaged and participates very well. The mayors and everybody shows up very well and we never had trouble with having enough people at our meetings and stuff. So, we're very lucky there. And a couple of years ago, we did add, uh, as a member, we changed our bylaws and we added in the, the Hawkeye Community College representative, which is really beneficial and she's loaded up, I think, every time.
We, you know, we have a very engaged board, um, being able, it's a great opportunity to really inform our communities, having all the mayors on our, our board of directors. So, that's a great opportunity to make sure that our organization is doing what our communities and our county want, um, as well as our investors, and we're able to really communicate with them what we're doing.
We've got a lot of good successes that you can hang your hat on. It just builds more enthusiasm, I think.
I, I think we have a great organization.
Yep.
This guy is one reason.
I think our big challenge this year is trying to figure out how we can incorporate tourism. Big challenge, it'll work. It's needed. And like I said, if it isn't, she's still capable of be doing all the work for it anyhow, so we gotta make, make sure we make that work.
We're working, yeah, we're working with tourism to support them as they move forward, um, and working with them to move beyond, beyond their addition, their funding that the county has so graciously been part of. Um, it's, it's really, their organization is one, when you are, um, giving funds to them, you're actually bringing in tax dollars. So, and I feel that's the way our organization does as well. What we're doing, um, we're producing an opportunity for growth within the county.
That's hard to, it's hard to pinpoint the, the benefit. It's not like you're selling a gallon of milk. You get paid right away. Yeah, it's a tough deal.
Lisa.
Thank you very much for what you do.
Girl, thanks for showing up for the meeting also.
Please, he's the one to answer any questions. He's been chair for a while, just a little while. Yeah.
Remember you missed a meeting and I guess you are next week, huh?
Yeah.
In South.
All right, we'll always reach out if you have any questions. I left a couple of.
Sure will.
In the reports hearing. Leanne.
Hi, I'm Leanne Harrison and I'm the Chair of the Buchanan County Historic Commission, which, uh, is also known as the Certified Local Government, C L G. We've been around since the nineteen eighties and the state of Iowa at that time required that, uh, every county have this commission. And, uh, so we've had our, uh, bylaws and, uh, we have to file with, uh, the State Historical Society, an annual report of what we have done throughout each year. So, that's, uh, what I'm doing today for you because we have to have your signature on these also. And I have two copies, one for you and one for me when you get. So, uh, the commission is five members and they're on for three years and they aren't all on at the same time. So, they don't all go off at the same time. A lot of them are also, um, with the historical societies. And we try to get that as a countywide, uh, not just a independence. I think that the latest thing that we have had, uh, was a letter from the D O T for the one fifty bridge south of Independence and that bridge is on the national register. So, if they want to do anything, um, even blacktopping it or whatever, um, we had, they have to get permission from the local commission that says, uh, we don't have a problem with it, you know? And so, obviously, the word is maintenance. And so, no, we don't have a problem with it. But, uh, that's just one of the things that when things are on the national register already, that when it's thing that involves something.
Is that bridge back to your value there?
Yes, right, mm-hmm, yeah. And that bridge, uh, was built in nineteen twenty-seven and has had several updates, but it was, was put on the national register, I believe in the nineteen nineties, along with several other bridges in the county.
It really needs a new deck, but.
Yeah.
I don't know if the D O T is gonna spring for that or not.
Well, they're thinking.
They did a lot of nice patching on it.
Yeah, I, I know, yeah, especially for motorcycles.
Which bridge, the bridge did the elephant fall through?
That, it's not there anymore, but, um, yeah, that was the main, main drag. So.
One prior to the current.
Oh, yes, several. I think we've had five different bridges at that location.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and the local history, back in the eighteen sixties or so. Anyway, for the national register, uh, it's up to the individual that owns the building to apply. Uh, they go through the State Historical Society to get the application, fill out the application as the need and why it should be. Um, and a lot of the different, uh, historical museums such as Aurora and, um, Raleigh and Brandon, uh, they all are making application, um, they're all old banks, uh, as far as the buildings. And, uh, so it's up to the individuals to, to do that. Then it goes to the State Historical Society, which then they only meet four times a year. So, um, at that time, when they're, one of their meetings, they will say, yes, this has qualifications and send it back to the Buchanan County Commission, which is us. And we look at it and we say, yes, it looks like it's a good deal and send it back to the state. Then the state has to send it to the national. So, this whole thing takes over a year to do it. Um, so it just is not, you know, done.
Not user-friendly.
No, right, right. So, anyway, um, the different things that we have helped, uh, the county with this year, uh, is Aurora is trying to get, uh, their building on the register. When they have several different people on their, their board, um, some people like, oh, let's just forget it. You know, but, uh, you can qualify for matching grants through the state. Uh, it's, um, H R D P grant, uh, and I don't think a lot of people are aware of that. Even somebody that has a historic town, uh, or historic building in a housing development. Um, there are several here in Independence that have qualified through the years. And we always try to push a historic district. Uh, Independence has not ever, um, managed to do that even for the, the main street such. Anyway, that's why I'm here to, um, have the signature for the annual.
I'd make a motion that we approve it and have the chair sign.
Second.
Hall of Fame.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leanne.
Yes.
So, and you wanna sign these right now and then Leanne can take them in for? Are the X?
Yep. Mission is supposed to have, um, storage in it, whatever county it is. I think we still have a, a drawer in the back, do we, on the bottom cabinet, back in the back hallway.
They accommodate all kinds of storage up there.
There's kind of a note room up there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep, have a good week.
Interesting hearing about the whole process it has to go through.
Uh, yeah, so it's just not a one-week deal.
Hey, what's up next? Um, courthouse maintenance.
Yeah, I requested to have this, uh, two items put on the agenda to discuss, to see if the board's interested in moving forward and having these two company, represented from these companies come in here and give us a presentation, uh, one is Martin Gardner Architecture, uh. I think I made copies and you guys got what they are posing and they could come in. Bethany, uh, Jordan said she would come in and do a presentation on all what they can do. And this is concerning the deterioration of the walls around the court, courtroom windows and stuff up there that sometime or another is gonna have to be addressed. So, she would be happy to come in and do a presentation to the board. And I wanted to make sure that the board was okay with having her come in to present and tell all she would do on this proposal and how would it be able to help us move forward in, in getting this issue addressed.
I think, you know, if there's anybody else other than Martin Gardner that can do this?
I'm sure there is.
Yeah, in reading her proposal, it sounds like it's a never-ending escalation of cost. And to me, it sounds like we're paying a lot for just asking questions.
There again, we gotta have some kind of starting point and that's why if we have this individual come in or we quiz her, question her about it, I think it would help us move forward by talking to somebody else.
It's gonna cost us to have her come in and talk to us, see all these keys on here.
No queue come in with. But it's all depends how the board wants to move forward. We got an issue, we got a problem up there and it's gonna put off, put off, put off. And are we gonna move forward with it or not?
Well, I definitely think it needs to.
I think you both.
Be addressed.
Seen the issue and problem up there and stuff, so.
Did we put funds in our budget for these repairs for this upcoming year?
There's been a hundred and fifty thousand put in, in that category. But this is gonna be a long extended process to get this taken care of. It'll probably be in the, before anything is actually done, this would be probably is the following budget here. We gotta have, we gotta move forward to find out exactly what we need to put in and what's gonna take to do this repair. And that's what the architects are gonna come up with.
They have to maintain the historical significance.
Right. And this company has got historical stuff before and other courthouses and stuff. That's why she could come in and explain all this, what she did and all. That connects up with the taking care of our historical building here.
There's some, um, architects in Waterloo that have worked in that downtown Waterloo area too. They'd be just, so they would know the old buildings.
So, just so I understand, the, um, courtroom maintenance, what all does that entail? Cause that's different than the courthouse wall moisture, right? Okay, so the courtroom needs what?
Well, it's got peeling plaster and all deterioration around the windows and on the rear, we call that the north wall. The problem.
Yeah, there's all problems, especially around the windows.
While we're doing that, you need to do the landing. See the the molding or at the top of the landing.
On that north entrance.
Yeah.
And just.
This is primarily for the courtroom.
Right, this, this one, what we're talking about.
But you could do that other little project and along with it, if you have somebody out here to do, because this.
It's gonna take the same.
It's gonna take the same skills. Yeah.
But we gotta have a starting point. We gotta have a beginning point and how we're gonna start moving forward with this.
I, I have no problem during her presentation, but before we really move forward, I would like to maybe get a call from a couple of other architecture firms.
Definitely.
Cause it, it, to me, it just looked like a way for us to keep spending unlimited money and I don't.
I agree, but, uh, I think it'll just give us an idea how we need to move forward.
Yeah. As far as the oyster Reno Dry, this is the company that we met with several months ago.
Did a survey study of the courthouse. They went to all the nooks and crannies and find out where our moisture problem is, where our deterioration is on our, basically our foundation walls and how it can be addressed and taken care of by this company.
And that one is a significant investment, but I think it's something we need to do to preserve the courthouse here.
And there again, I, I think, uh, they'd be willing to come in and give a home presentation here to us on that too. And then that way, we can determine how we wanna move forward. I, I've talked to a lot of people that have worked with moisture problems in buildings and stuff like that. This is something a little different than, because usually the answer is, is to tile around the building, uh, internally, externally. And to me, it's, you're not taking care of a problem just by encapsulating, sealing the moisture. This actually removes the moisture problem.
Right.
So, I would, was hoping that we could bring this company in and they could give a presentation also. It's all works and everything.
I would make a motion that we have the architectural firm comment and then also Reno Dry comment and give us a presentation so we can make a final decision.
Do you like me to contact them and?
Sure.
And there again, I want, this is, I think this is an issue. We wanna make sure that all three of us are here for it. So, I'll make sure that I can put that out past your expected time off.
So, are you gonna bring them in to meet during a board meeting?
Yes. Offer advice and meet and contact and then set up something.
Yes. I got a first, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we need to set a public screening date for Craig and Kathy's conference.
No, I think I got it for March a lot of. Here, March 11th? Yep, public hearing for the zoning request on, excuse me, March 11th at 9:30.
Good.
Make a motion to set those public hearings. It'll affect the in, Greg, in whole, is that March 11th at 9:30?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comments?
Want to comment?
Sure.
Leaky windows and stuff like that. I was, haven't checked the roof. Sometimes it leaks down between the walls.
Right.
So if a window problem is a roof problem. Why does Dunkerton, that's the way it was. Now that building's no longer existing. That part of the building is.
That's something that's going to be gone. Study is to, the main thing is, like you said, and I talked to the architect, is identify where the problem is coming from, the source.
Another question I have is, what's everybody's comment or feeling on the legislation that they tried to push through last week? That died for committee with basically giving eminent domain or the power, the county losing power, the citizens losing the power, they're letting the state taking patrol. Any, any comments, where's it going to go next or?
I'm happy it died.
Now, is that, I, I read something, because there's a lot of communication, people are really worried, a lot of counties got on stick and, and you know, get the decision. Now, somebody mentioned, and I don't know if that's true or not, could that be, could that be reintroduced in a month or just have to wait until the whole next session?
But I was told it's, it still could come back to life. You legislative leadership could bring it back to life. And I don't know, I don't fully understand all their timeframes and funnel days and deadlines they got down there. But that's what I told, that's the only hope that it can be brought back and have to be brought back by legislative leadership.
Yeah, I did look at the, because you can see who's behind the bills, the money behind the bills. Next era was top three slots.
See what they have for their height restriction? One tenth size. That's 50 feet.
And it would basically wipe out any county ordinance.
Yes.
Which is scary.
Yeah.
And they don't recheck for the, their bonding stuff? Think at 15 years is what I was reading.
It was like next year.
Probably to it.
I did a little research in here and there is more and more pushback against wind developers across the country. As a result, Michigan, Illinois, Vermont, and several other states are seeking to grab power away from counties by allowing state authorities to approve and control wind development. Iowa SB, Iowa Senate Bill 3169 was introduced to remove local control over wind energy in Iowa. This should scare all of Iowa's 99 counties. Fortunately, they not make it out of, live out of the subcommittee last week. After reading this proposed bill, one would think it was authors authorized, authored by wind developers, like you said. We have never seen such a one-sided proposal. Whatever restrictions are placed on wind turbines by the Buchanan County Board of Supervisors will be completely negated by this bill. This isn't the first attempt at moving this type of bill forward and it won't be the last. Also, I just looked at the county map of Dickinson County yesterday. And you have a map that shows all the current wind turbines. Then they also have a whole bunch of ones proposed. If you do the math, add them up, the proposed ones that they want to add in is about four times the number of turbines that are already there. Which just creates back to that phrase about, look, get their foot in the door, you know what's going to happen? So Buchanan County has to set a limit. But there's just going to keep coming for more and more and more. It's been proven all over the country, that's, that's the game.
And I heard that they are actually putting a height limitation of 800 feet. And currently they're at 500 feet. So you're adding another.
582.
Yeah.
It's taller than the principal building in the morning.
Yeah. So it.
It's scary.
It's frightening.
Would you like to look at that all around and spread it out?
You know, I really enjoyed my drive to work this morning. I looked across the field, you know, certain props out now. You look across, you know, you can kind of off in the sun, off in the distance, you can see like a farm building or a water tower. It was nice.
When the foliage is off trees. Makes it more open. Summertime, when the foliage is on, you see a lot less. But like this for about four or five months out of the year. If there are no subsidies, there are no turbines. That's right.
The county's worth funding.
Solar. And solar, if you go down by Palo and Center Point, I mean, people are getting angry and angry all the time with all the, you see all the good black soil they destroyed and they're not going to replace it until, you know? You know, the one presentation, oh, we'll keep that, it's like, well, you bet you will, sure. Yeah, you'll keep.
Where are they going with?
I don't know.
They're selling it. They're doing.
Jessica could use somewhere in there, new. On.
Using a little example, when Bethany did, put the new football field in, they needed a way to remove the existing soil, soils. Put in rock and all the different layers and materials to make the fake football. Partially in charge of that. So I had 50 dump trucks coming and going in and out of there. And there were people that I didn't have either coming in and getting owed dirt, going back home or wherever. It happened most of, and I was getting paid to get rid of it and then I was reselling it again. Plus I was getting paid in trucking both ways. So I know how that works.
Yeah.
I would like to make a comment on the architect, from Martin Gardner. Dave Martin is from here in Independence, originally graduated here from Independence and is Joe Martin's son.
Good information though.
That person in the courthouse. Didn't you guys, didn't this building and stuff fall into the historical and get.
It is.
It's already.
It is already. And that's one thing, there's more, and that's why the architect, I think, can even plans our organization. We need guidance and where to go get grant money and stuff. I've been told that there's maybe a 60-40 grant money out there and stuff like that. We're hoping that grant money is going to help do a lot of funding in this project. But when you do that, you've got to meet their criteria, you've got to do exactly with the way they want it done.
Oh, yeah, you'll have to have.
And we're required to do that.
Yeah, well, when you were presenting this to them, you, that wasn't shocking like you're going to have to build this whole thing and.
No, there, there's some 50-50 stuff out there, some 60-40 stuff out there and I'm not, I'm not a grant person. So I'm going to rely on whatever the state or historical society can help us out with and the architect. Give us some guidance and.
And then you're going to start writing that grant.
Yeah.
Sounds like the person's here.
And believe me, I got her phone number. But Bobby, your original question and stuff. I'm all about local control and home rule and stuff like that. But this being brought up, I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't a shock, it wasn't a surprise. Because I, I knew all along this was going to happen to me. There's other states out there that was mentioned that are against it, don't do it, but there's states out there that have put that in place. And you know, it's all about the money, where the money's at and the pressure, lobby pressure and everything and it, and everything. I just heard yesterday that this EV thing is not working out very well and there's going to be a major cutback on that. Because they got thousands of vehicles setting on lots that they can't move and can't sell.
You know, getting back to the original thing is what's best for Buchanan County. We have to fight this and keep this from happening. So we can have a say what's going on or we just going to let the governor and, and it's really scary when you study and used Taman County, for example, was the, the money under the table that gets passed around.
I put my input in, my, it went to my senator and two of my representatives. Yeah.
The sad thing is there's big money pushing this thing and politicians are all benefiting from it, from the lobbyists and. It could be.
So how long has next year been around? I know I just, I had an article called the other day that back in 2014, that in, close to Aberdeen, South Dakota, foggy night, there was a pilot and three cattle that were coming back from a meeting in Texas. It was really foggy, they were, they were flying low and next year was the owner of this turbine back then, 14 years ago, it was only 382 feet tall. Well, you know, four dead people because they ran into it because the light was. And you know, there's, there's, there's instances that can happen and there's, you know, there were three young, young fathers. But what are we going to do if it's 800 feet tall?
I don't like their new thing about not having the lights blinking at night because you're relying on technology to turn that on when an airplane goes over. Not for a long time.
It's like. Same time. I mean, it's, it's, it's bigger than the city of Independence. It's probably like 10, maybe 11.
There are some pros and cons on this. I mean, we had, I got, got some information, I got a flyer on it down there when I was down in Goodwin three weeks ago, that America was set up down there and about the radar control and lighting and stuff like that. And I think a lot of pushes towards that, so you don't have them flashing, all them flashing all night long. And like Dawn said, we rely on technology for everything, you know, and if technology fails.
Speaking of Oklahoma, my, my wife has a friend that graduated with her in Independence and she's, lives down in Oklahoma and what company, she didn't know what company it was, but somebody put up several turbines and, and and did it illegally because it was on Indian Reservation.
Oops.
And she's wondering, are they just going to take like, like, those here, four feet off the top? Or are you going to go all down to 20 feet, there is all the concrete and the iron and stuff and, and so there's going to be, there's quite a to do with, between the reservation and the state.
You removed the ones up by Fairbank, did they take all that out?
Yes. Scott was in here a couple of weeks ago and talking about that and they went down, believe they took it.
And they didn't have permission to put them in or something, didn't they?
Right. That's the head county. Do things and, and make all kinds of money and then all slap me on the wrist. Anyway.
Is there any, any further comments? I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks everybody for your comments.
Thank you.